Good evening. I'd like to call the April tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Hamlin Board of Selectmen to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted live, the Town Hall Auditorium plus broadcast on Zoom. We are recording the meeting. Is there anybody else recording it?
Dalton.
First on the agenda, we have minutes of March thirteenth.
Are these the ones you motioned approval of last week?
Yeah, probably. So we have the school committee and the school superintendent, finance director. What happened? Yeah. Yeah.
I'd like to see a note about how quick it is that you guys adjourn in a second.
We should like keep a track and see if we can improve our time.
Yeah, really.
Always room for improvement.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I want to commend you on staying on top of the minutes. I mean, it's really been a market improvement. You know, we are not missing anything. Twenty-one, twenty-two, really pretty much up to date on twenty-three. Pretty much. Okay, first on the agenda, citizens petition. And we have former selectman Jim Smith. Mr. Ford, Jim, please.
It's Article sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't discuss placement, but.
Thank you. Jim, welcome. We received your petition plus a motorized from the town clerk that it's improper order, signatures are validated, et cetera. Let's give us a brief recap.
Okay, my presentation last week, after input here at the meeting and subsequent to that, I learned that I had the cart before the horse, so to speak. I was talking about appropriating from an ambulance reserve fund, thinking that fund would be, could be automatically created by the treasurer or the accountant. Subsequently learned that that fund actually has to be voted on and created first. So this is an entirely different wording. As you said, it was submitted with the ten signatures required, actually more than ten. This is to create an account that if the Board of Selectmen direct the fire department to provide ambulance transport services, that any funds that come from that go into this separate account and then can be taken out of that account at subsequent town meetings to be used to offset the costs of any of that transfer.
So a targeted account, basically?
Correct.
Okay, similar, like I said last week, similar to transfer station, but you know.
Yeah, you made that analogy last time, and it's a little bit different. The enabling legislation.
The concept is?
The concept is similar.
Yeah.
And interestingly, it applies to golf courses and skating rinks and other recently operated facilities.
It's on our agenda for next week, right?
So anyhow, I thank you for the opportunity to speak about it.
When it comes to town meeting, are you gonna motion this one?
I will if asked to do so, yes.
Okay, and I believe, you know, according to our gospel, the Selectmen's Handbook, a citizen's petition really isn't something we have much sway over.
Correct.
You submitted it correctly. It goes on the warrant.
Well.
The warrant was open.
They have.
Okay, go ahead.
They have two, two points. Number one, the procedure is to give it to the selectman. The selectman give it to the registrar voters. I don't think they did that. Circumvented that. And secondly of all, that's not certified by any registrar voters.
I haven't seen that yet.
Who put it on the desk here?
I did.
Okay.
I was not into that.
So it's not signed by the registrar as required by law?
Well, bit of a conundrum. As Don said, there is a bit of a procedure to follow. I'm inclined to offer some latitude that if, I think, or Don's statement, that if the certification doesn't come through, Jim, the selectman will move no action on the article if it's not properly vetted in time for town meeting. I think the question before us, do we offer some latitude and add it to the warrant?
I, you know, I would have appreciated, you know, I went out of my way Sunday night to send this to the Board of Selectmen, say this is it, and I said the procedure that I would be bringing it to the town clerk for approval, and I would have appreciated heads up that it needed to go to the selectman first.
Well, I'm not so concerned about that because, you know, you did send the email and that stuff, so you know it was coming.
Okay.
I'm concerned that none of the registrars, none of the board registrars sign the certification.
And I discussed this with the town clerk Friday night. She said she would, you know, that Monday would be sufficient time, Monday morning.
I know she had a medical thing.
And family, she couldn't do it. She wasn't in today.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's a few folks.
Well, we've kept the, we've kept the warrant open two weeks in a row now for this, and still it's not set. So I, my vote would be no.
I don't think it's Jim's fault that it didn't get us authorized.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't care whose fault it is. It's not the proper procedure. If we're gonna expect these things to happen in the future, then we gotta follow the procedure. And unfortunately, no one was here today to do that. And that law clearly says that the selectmen shall submit written requests to the board of registrars or the board of elected commissioners who will forthwith certify the signatures on the checklist. And none of those signatures are certified.
Okay, and I see you're aware because you have the law printed out, so maybe there could have been a little more back and forth. Hey, Jim, you're coming in, we don't have this here.
I didn't know what he would have.
Right.
So, I mean.
Again, in lieu of Jim's service, I mean, he's a former selectman, twelve years, he's not coming in asking for something that is out of the ordinary here. I'm inclined to, my personal thing is a client to go ahead. Like I say, if you don't get the ducks in a row before town meeting, we take no action.
Okay, look.
You're saying it's not legally proper to put on, is your point?
Yeah, and are we gonna close the warrant tonight and then reopen it to put it on, or just let it stay on?
Well, the other thing is that we sponsor it to go on.
You can vote that way, yeah. You can do that.
Right.
Do what?
We could sponsor it on there. Jim has submitted, he's, because the town clerk had a medical emergency, couldn't come in, couldn't do the certification for the board of registrars, which probably would have been done. He's asking for a little forbearance here.
Yeah, like I said, I don't think it's Jim's fault that there was a.
I'm not blaming Jim.
I know, and therefore he got his, his stuff done in a proper timeframe.
He got his thing done, he went out and got the signatures.
This building's problem didn't happen, didn't happen. So it's not, it's out of his control because he did everything that he was supposed to do procedurally wise.
Well, except for the fact that we've kept the warrant open two weeks in a row, almost three weeks now, to get this done.
You know, and if there was some law that he was unaware of that this board was aware of, I mean, it would have been nice to have said in protocol, too.
I think Donald's points are, you know, I, I'm a procedures person. I agree with you, Donald. Okay, so if the Board of Selectmen want to take this on independently, you know, and you do so tonight, that's fine. I appreciate it. If, if the procedures, you know, if, if there's, for some reason, the procedure wasn't met, it will be coming up at a forthcoming meeting special or next town meeting.
Not even.
But I would prefer it not to be on the warrant if it's a moot point.
Right, and I don't want it to be on the warrant if it's defective either. I think, you know, this goes, the warrant goes to the AG for all vetting. This could be an issue at that point. Do we kick the warrant down the road another week? That's kind of the question. We're not up against the timeframe at this point. We have time for that. But it shows, I want to say, we have a process to go through. We should be on top of that process. We want to go ahead and print the green sheets and get them out and add this on there. Bob, you put this language on your draft copy already, right?
Right.
Yes. You have the, it's Article sixteen.
Right. Craig makes a good point. Through no, and Don, you're quite correct, through no fault of Jim's, it didn't get done in time. Do we give him a little more time to let the Town Hall finish their part?
I think if the Town Hall was not in the capacity to do its job properly today, then an accommodation should be made for that.
Okay, we could put this on our agenda for next Monday. We could schedule a five-minute meeting on Thursday to close the warrant, giving Jim a day to get his signatures done by the board of registrars proper for the warrant, all the ducks in a row, and then just we quickly meet for five minutes to close the warrant and post it this week. Who knows? Maybe there's something comes out of the advisory hearing tonight that we want to modify the rest of the warrant. And that could happen, too. We've got a lot of interesting things on the, on the docket.
That's a good point, too. I mean, do we typically close the warrant before advisory gives their hearing?
We typically do, yeah.
Yeah.
But again, we've got some interesting topics on there this time.
Well, you can close the warrant.
And reopen, right.
And not sign it. You're closing it to submissions by other than the selectman. You have plenty of authority, plenary authority to do whatever you want with that warrant before you sign it.
Actually, that brings up another point. Don, you may have researched this. Does a citizen petition trump the closing of the warrant?
Nope.
So once it's closed, even petition can't come in?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Citizens do have a right to insert any warrant, any kind of language, you know, with ten signatures in a town meeting.
Yes.
Hundred for a special.
I think we give him leeway. I mean, I already said what I thought. So it's not our fault, it's not his fault, it's not anybody's fault, but the Town Hall wasn't able to perform its duties today because of an issue. To no fault of whoever. But, you know, if, if there's a timeframe and a procedure.
So it's the town, it's the town, it's the town's fault?
It's a combination of circumstances.
Then we kept the warrant open for three weeks to accommodate this warrant article? You know, as much as hard as he worked this weekend, it's done.
Well, technically, last week, we didn't close it because it wasn't on the agenda.
Right. So looking for guidance here. We're a team. Do we hold the warrant open for all week?
I'm, I'm in favor of doing whatever we have to do to make sure we do the right thing. So procedurally wise, we didn't do the right thing as a town to make sure that something couldn't get added in the proper time. Make sure the procedure is followed for this, then yeah, yeah, I think we're obligated to.
And if something else comes up at the advisory hearing, that gives us an opportunity to modify other things as well.
And I just want to record it. On the record, I'm opposed to that. I want to close the warrant this evening.
Make a motion, close the warrant, or just focus a team if you'd like.
I move we close the warrant.
I'll second it for discussion only. All those, do we want to discuss? I think we discussed it. All those in favor closing the warrant?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. See, we're not rubber stamped. People think that.
Give you a rubber stamp. Jim doesn't know what's going on.
Yeah, well, Jim's been there before. He's been.
Because I didn't quite understand John's vote.
Yeah, John voted aye for both.
You, you. I seconded his motion.
Right, and then.
And then you voted aye.
You voted aye.
Yes, you did.
I asked for no votes, and I voted aye.
You stood all in favor.
You stood all in favor, and I said, on the motion, I said aye, and you said aye.
The motion failed. Okay. All right, Jim, come back next week trying. Hopefully Eva's family is better, and you can get this done.
Okay.
Thank you. Actually, I don't know if we need you back for a second. Now, it's, it's processing on our part, right, Don?
Yeah.
Be notified by the registrars that things are proper.
Okay.
So we don't need to see you next week. All right. Not that we don't want.
Oh, you're happy not to see me. This is on the draft agenda, so the advisory people will be discussing it tonight.
Did you saw those DAFID those you had out there?
Yes.
Thank you, because I was coming back from Boston yesterday. My wife said, you gotta stop and get flowers. I'm not gonna do what you're doing.
Yeah, regardless of.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Well, that was global warrant. That's gone by. Shared health shortfall. Bob, want to give us a quick recap of this afternoon's meeting?
Yes. We had the administrators on and some others. John was on the meeting from the towns that are sharing the health service.
God bless you.
Basically, they said that they made mistakes when they, when they created the budget for the current year, that they did not include benefits, they did not include the higher cost to hire, and they didn't include the, the, well, the OPEB, and they didn't include, yeah, OPEB, is the only thing. They did, they said they didn't include health insurance either. And so these things added up, and the cost to the town is twenty-two thousand and change. We all just reviewed it. Finn did say that he has been in touch with the state office and has, to put this correctly, he has some confidence that the state grant for the coming year, that is fiscal twenty-four, will cover all of the costs and that we would not have to necessarily anticipate having to put funds in to the program. It's probably a good idea to at least establish the account in our budget so that we could transfer money if, if necessary. Right now, we don't have the account, so transferring is not an easy thing to do. Everybody said that they were satisfied with the service. I think that's the experience we've had here, that the service is good, it's better than what other, what we've all had collectively in terms of the service. And I'm not sure that anybody took responsibility. I don't think it's really Finn's responsibility. I thought, you know, there should have been some review in the accounting office, or maybe the manager's office. That's, that's where the problem should have been.
I'm having a question. We've got this Excel sheet here, budgetary information. I can see the errors in this already.
Yeah.
Don, if you look at, for instance, the cell that has fifty-seven thousand, yeah, well, that's supposed to be the two items above it added in. Look at the one to the right. There's not. There should have been twenty-two and one thirty-nine if that was the same thing, and that total would have been one sixty-one or whatever. So I kind of questioned the other ones below it, and I'm like, Finn's expertise is running a health department. He should be getting more help from, I think we said this before, from the accounting department in Long Meadow for this type of thing here.
Technically, employees of Long Meadow, so they should fall under their HR and accounting, everything over there.
I have confidence that the, like I say, the team that's in the contract, the administrators of the different towns, will stay on top of this. I am kind of concerned that we don't have a valid number for FY twenty-four because he's hoping to get another grant. We have a third year of a grant that's already approved, and a question whether the state is actually gonna add more money to a grant they've already issued. My experience would be they won't. So if we have a shortfall of X number of dollars, you would think that everyone got a raise, as Craig said, was the call in Long Meadow. So the difference next year is gonna be more. Everybody got a raise, our retirement went up, all those things. So the shortfall's gonna be more. We talked before about adding a line item into the board health budget.
That's what we need.
We don't know what the number is.
No.
And I think.
About a token amount.
Our best hope is that we would be able to fund that amount at the fall town meeting out of free cash. It's a bit of an emergency because we don't have that number yet.
Right.
But it's probably gonna be, if we're twenty-four now, Don, you gotta think it's at least four percent more. I'm sure they had a call of four, plus what was retirement this year up?
There was a percent, there was up quite a bit.
Was it? Yeah. So.
Yeah, why is that indirect health insurance over there?
Right, and then obviously the personnel came on.
Right.
You see the staff thing, so that jumped out of.
Didn't you say the first year we gave money back because they didn't spend it all to?
Yeah.
Give it back to the state?
Yeah, because they didn't spend it all, so they couldn't carry it over. Right.
First mistake. Don't write the check.
And how come, why would they, I probably don't know the answer to this, but I'll ask it anyhow. Why would the FY twenty-three, why would they only get two hundred and twenty-nine thousand when the grant was for two hundred and eighty-seven thousand? Because they gave money back? Is that why?
We didn't discuss that.
Probably, I think they said the first year they only had two people instead of the four.
That's right, yeah. So the original grant was for two eighty-seven five.
But they, they weren't fully staffed up. That's probably the reason.
So is that why they gave the money? That's why, so then the state said, well, you only spent two twenty-nine last year, so that's what you get this year?
We want it back.
First free year, too.
The consensus, I think, of the, of the people who were on this call today was that we have a very good program, and financially, it has not been managed well.
Correct.
Right.
I think we all agree that, right?
We'd like to see the accounting team in Long Meadow take a little more ownership.
Yes.
Where I think we are.
Exactly.
Like I say, we think.
So our new bill is twenty-one, four forty-five, which we're down about two thousand bucks from the original bill. Well, that was worth the effort.
Right. And so we gotta find a way to fund that shortfall this year.
Yeah.
Which we could go to reserve. It's still fully funded at.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, hasn't been touched yet. That's the thing. We could look for a little line-to-line transfer for something. So it's a question for our financing. Again, but I think what we're seeing is here.
About it, and because we don't have a line item.
Right.
We can't transfer money in. No place to transfer the money to an account. We did put the extra free cash that we had into stabilization so that we have no free cash. So it would either be the reserve fund that the, I don't, I don't think we've tapped it at all.
We haven't. That's why I said it's still at twenty-five, so we could do that. I do want to be clear, though.
Stabilization?
I think what we're seeing from the board's standpoint is that we don't, we think there's a breakdown in the accounting services in the administration part, not the health services.
Right.
We think they've done an excellent job.
Yeah, that's it.
And so.
We got people waiting. See Finn on now. Does he, we need anything from him?
Finn, do you have?
I do that with my wife a lot, too. I can't hear you on my cell phone. I'm in a bad place.
Yeah, in the driveway.
If you're sitting next to her when you do that.
Texting her. All right. So I think we beat that to death. And bond oversight. We put this on here because I think Don brought up a question. Where are we with the bonds that are required by solar fields? And then I expanded upon that, saying we also should have two bonds for tower sets. I think, I don't know if you saw that email back.
Oh, yeah.
In the tower bylaw, we're supposed to get a decommissioning bond as well. And since the time I passed that back in, gosh, ninety-eight, I think, we had two towers erected, one at the landfill and one in Commercial Drive. I think I heard Pam said you guys located the SBC bond for the one at the landfill.
I will be getting it.
But we did find record that we had a bond, right. But I don't know about the one at Commercial Drive, the, what we refer to as the Turnburg Tower. So, and then, of course, we should be getting decommissioning bonds for any field erected after the bylaw. I mean, I'm sure the timing.
There was, there was, the original, I guess, well, Joanne gave me that, two twenty-ninth Summers Road, thirty-ninth Stony Hill, and sixty-one Stony Hill will be for the bylaws.
Plus the Kibbe.
That, that's Kibbe, yeah, that's Kibbe, the two twenty-nine.
Right.
And then we've got for Mill Road, we've got Rear Summers Road, which is Borrego. We've just got the landfill, and we've got the Ames Road one.
And the planning board has decided not to do any more bonding, decommissioning bonding. They're going to take cash and invest it.
I think we say it's an instrument, and I think.
Yes, instrument, yeah. The issue that I brought up was on the two twenty-seven Mill Road bond. It was only for one year.
Yes.
And that was ended in twenty-twenty. So I don't know if we have a new one for that. And if we have a new one for that, the bylaw says that every three years, the planning board can review, you know, inflation and require additional, you know, to bump them up depending on inflation. So on three of those, the debt timeline is coming up in twenty-twenty-four, sometime twenty-twenty-four. But the Mill Road, two twenty-seven, two twenty-seven Mill Road, I don't know where we are at that because they only did it for one year, so.
When I asked that question, response was, we're, we're moving to cash. So.
I know. I don't give a damn. We don't have the cash. We don't have the bond. That's the issue.
And then the next question I think you brought up, okay, who's administering these after we get that? In my mind, it should be the treasurer, but.
Wasn't there also an issue with new growth, too, with one at that Mill Road?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
And they, they weren't coming back with their numbers for that?
Yeah, yes. The, the, I think the treasurer, I think, I agree with you, John, that the treasurer is, has some responsibility there, but really, it's under the planning board because it's part of the special permit.
You mean a holder of them?
Yeah, yeah, the treasurer is the holder, but the, you'd be on the planning board to have some kind of tickler system to make sure.
On the radar, yeah.
Yeah.
So we need to stay on top of that. First off, any bonds were missing. We need to be on top. Don has the list of three. I agree. The question was, when do they come in? Probably should be prior to the COO, COO, really.
Right.
I mean, just because they got granted approval doesn't mean they have to write the bond right then or the instrument. But before they turn it on, we better have that in place, that timing-wise.
Well, do we have consensus on where the administration should be of this? Don is saying planning board presumably, and John says treasurer.
Well, the bylaw says, the bylaw says every three years, the planning board may review. So, I mean, that's, that's where it is.
Yeah, but I go back to, and I think it's what we just talked about with the shared health thing. Planning board's really not financial oversight. I think it's, but I don't know if it's our board. We brought it to light. I'd like to see planning, treasurer, accountant work together to come up with a system. Now, we asked about, I think, the question was, are looking for, in the minutes of planning, about the Commercial Drive Tower. When was that approved? And I don't see it. But somebody said the reason probably is because it was, there was a bylaw. They probably went to the building inspector. He did all the work, issued the permit like he should. There's no need to go to planning because it was in a commercial district, totally appropriate for it. So he would have been the one following through with that.
Well, I haven't put any time in that because I've been involved with the town meeting, but if you want to put this on the agenda for next week, I'll give you a report. Where are the bonds? Which bonds are up to date and in order?
be on top. Don has the list of three. I agree, the question was, when do they come in? Probably should be prior to the COO, COO really.
Right.
I mean, just because they got granted approval doesn't mean they have to write the bond right then or the instrument. But before they turn it on, we better have that in place, that timing wise.
Well, do we have consensus on where the administration should be of this? Donna's saying planning board presumably, and John says treasurer.
Well, the bylaw says, the bylaw says every three years the planning board may review. So I mean, that's, that's where it is.
Yeah, but I go back to, and I think it's what we just talked about with the shared health thing. Planning board's really not financial oversight. I think it's, but I don't know if it's our board, we brought it to light. I'd like to see planning, treasurer, accountant work together to come up with a system. Now, we asked about, I think the question was, are looking for, in the minutes of planning, about the Commercial Drive Tower. When was that approved? And I don't see it. But somebody said the reason probably is because it was, there was a bylaw. They probably went to the building inspector, he did all the work, issued the permit like he should. There's no need to go to planning because it was in a commercial district, totally appropriate for it. So he would have been the one following through with that.
Well, I haven't put any time in that because I've been involved with the town meeting, but if you want to put this on the agenda for next week, I'll give you a report. Where are the bonds? Which bonds are up to date and in order? And where do we have problems?
Well, I don't know if we need it on our agenda. I'm saying we're kind of targeting you, the accountant, whatever, put it in your report. I'm on top of the bond, they have met with the stakeholders in the process, and we're getting it together. I don't think we need more oversight from our board. You agree, Don? Craig?
Yeah.
We're busy with dogs. We really haven't got time for towers and solar. Don is going to be, are you on top of that? Don is walking up and down Raymond Drive right now, every night. All right, next thing on the agenda, and we're almost right on time. We're going to have some changes in our departments, and I asked to have the board talk about where we're going within FY '24 with how the town administrator, the board selectman's office, and the board health office is going to be organized going forward. Jane, do you want to come up, please?
I've given you copies of the job descriptions in both positions. These are descriptions that we put together with, these are the job descriptions that were put together with the Collins report.
Did you get a copy?
I, no, I took one from my computer, but I have a copy.
Okay. So for those that aren't aware, next year, both Pam Courtney and, in the next fiscal year, both Pam Courtney and Jane Bedingworth will be retiring from the town. Certainly, you know, we're still organizing the festivities. We haven't got in the budget for that yet, but-
So we need those bonds from the-
Thanks, Don. It's, you know, the townhouse event account. But this may be an opportunity for us to look over how those different departments are run, how they serve the public, and should we be doing something different. And I think I've mentioned in prior meetings, maybe it's time to look at the hours of operation. Jim is still here, he remembers back in the day when we used to have a five-day-a-week office in the board of selectmen. And we went into a bit of a financial thing back in the early 2000s, cut it back a bit, and we haven't really reestablished it. We've talked about it, but haven't done it. Is this an opportunity for us to expand the services to the town by going back to five-day operation? Pam's job right now, I think, is budgeted for 30 hours, Pam or 30? We could do six hours a day, five days a week. Jane, your job is, where the hell is, right, yeah. Yeah, we pay her for 35, she works 72. But I will say, and also, I will say also, let me be clear, I think there are times, everybody puts in extra hours. I know Pam does, Bob does, Jane does. We have a great staff here who does what it needs to get the job done. So. But is this an opportunity for both? And I think the board has talked about, this provides a little backup as well when people are cross-trained. Back in Jim's time, we had that cross-training because board of health wasn't quite as time-consuming as it is now. I don't think, in my mind, knowing what both jobs do, there isn't that opportunity. There's more cross-training available for the administrative assistant and the town administrator, you know, but the town administrator was originally viewed as a full-time job. We've been fortunate to get Bob, but he's constrained by the state in that he cannot work more than X number of hours a year, which works out to basically three days a week. Right.
No, I think it makes sense for the board also to throw into the mix a strategy for the full-time town administrator when we get there. You have two options. One is to make sure there's a competitive salary in the budget, go into the market. There's two ways to do that. You can either advertise directly, or you can hire a headhunter, one of the public sector consultants who do this kind of work. I think there are now four in Massachusetts. We've used Collins, Ernie Lynch is out there, and there's a couple of guys on the Cape. That's one thing, that's one approach to it. The other approach that I think makes some sense is to look to upgrade one of these positions to an assistant town administrator and have that person on staff, sort of training, learning about the town and so forth, require certain standards for, for the applicants. And over a period of months, learn the job, and then when I depart, you can move that person up. Given the competitiveness of the market right now, I'd be inclined to say that's the best option. Half of the town administrators in Massachusetts are over 50. There are not enough young people coming in. And it's becoming very competitive. And I think Don sent out something from Middlefield in Washington, too, little town, Washington has 800 people and so forth, where they just raised the salary $20,000 because they're not getting applicants. I know in Berkshire they've had a great deal of difficulty hiring and retaining administrators. Not quite the same here. It's more competitive here. But I think realistically, the vast differences between salaries that are paid in the metropolitan area, in the Boston metro area, and in the eastern Massachusetts, and central and western Massachusetts, means that you're not going to get candidates from eastern Massachusetts. My successor in Ipswich is getting 213. So, it's, it's a question for the town.
Well, back when we first did this, one of our first applicants, I think Josh Garcia-
Yes.
Who was actually town administrator for Blandford and I think three towns at the same time, interested in here. And then, of course, like you say, probably one of the few people under 50.
Yeah.
And then he just left that job, and now he's mayor instead.
That's right.
Right. So there's nobody growing into that job.
We've now established a monthly meeting of town administrators in this region. And come and take a look. A lot of gray hair.
They still have hair?
Pardon? So I think that's the challenge for the town temporarily and also long-term. The other pattern that you want to resist is that, you know, you look at the administrators who get hired in Berkshire, central Mass, as soon as they do a couple of contracts, they're applying for higher-paying jobs in, in the wealthy suburbs of Boston.
Well, the other thing we haven't touched on, and, you know, we briefly mentioned is that you have a renewal coming up yourself. Your contract expires. I think the board has a sense that you're going to stay on.
Yes. But-
But-
For another fiscal year.
Right.
And then-
Only be, and just be, you know, we would have a turnover of all three people if we didn't renew you.
Right.
And would that be a bit of a turmoil in the front office if you will?
I think it will be. And I think the suggestions that you've heard from the two incumbents here who are going to be retiring is that they need time to do some, whatever we decide to do. It would make sense to do a hire a month or so in advance so that those, so the new hires could be trained to, to get, to do the job and keep it going. It's a, these are busy offices, you don't find a lot of time to just walk around and goof off. I mean, if you come in, you'll see that people are at their desk because there's a lot of things going on in this town of less than 5,000.
Well, what we haven't done then, if we're talking about something like that, we haven't looked at readjusting salaries. And that's the thing.
Right.
You know, we have a number in there for Pam based on her COLA per grade step, the whole thing. You would think that if somebody comes in for the admin assistant, they would come in a little lower. If we're reimagining the position, it may not be enough. The advisory has been loath to talk about moving money from free cash into salaried positions. So there may be an opportunity to talk to them about that because of where we are right now. We don't want to. They've mentioned to us last week how tight the budget is. So they may not want to say, well, I know you want to put an extra $30,000 there, but you don't know if you're going to need it.
Yeah.
So maybe if they gave us a little latitude on the fall type thing, we could make that work out. I think maybe when they come up, we could have the conversation with them. Because we need that flexibility.
Jane's position, as of time, worked with the fire department, and that's changing.
No, that's 39. I worked 39.
39, yes.
Right.
35, just for the health.
35, yes, right.
So. But again, this is, this may not be solved tonight. I think it's got to be on our, on our plate.
I don't think it's going to be solved tonight.
No, no, but again, I'd like to come back. This has to be a, you know, number one thing going forward.
Run the agenda again for next week, so we can-
Come back with your ideas and let's, you know. I think it can be frank, open meeting discussion. I don't think we have any of this, but I think it's got to be a, a topic that we got to get on top of right now.
I think brings the good point between, you know, if we reimagine it with an assistant town administrator, you know, how does that work salary-wise? And will that take over and have a part-time board health agent? But then you're saying it's 35 hours, you know, there's a lot involved in it. So we're looking at more salary.
You look at East Long Meadow, they just hired an assistant town administrator, and I think Tom came in at 1:30. Yeah.
You're looking for-
Town manager, assistant town manager there, yeah.
So the, also, I've given you the job descriptions for these two positions. So I think we want to certainly begin by making sure that each function is covered by a new position of some kind, or a revised position.
But I think we're all pretty familiar with the overall parts of the department. Is the board agreeing with me that I don't think there's not really a good opportunity? There's opportunity for covering, across training. I don't think you have enough extra hours in each department, say, this person can be that person stepping in on a long-term basis.
We've got to look at the whole, the whole hours and everything.
Okay.
If you go to five days, you're going to find more instances where one office will be vacant on a particular day. And so having some cross-training so that the job can be covered would make some sense.
Why would one office be vacant if you went five days?
I'm not sure.
Not closed, but if, if one of, let's assume that we have two offices and one person's on vacation, sick.
Okay.
Taking a personal day, then we would have someone who had acceptable training to be able to cover.
But again, I think, I think it looks at restoring service to the public. I mean, town hall, this is a disability.
Do we even go further? I mean, do we want town hall to be open completely on Fridays?
Well, that goes back to, we don't manage other departments. I wouldn't be surprised if building wouldn't go along with it. You know, Wendell honestly is pretty much here five days a week, just the door is closed. So we certainly know Eva's here 80 hours a week. So. But we would make those departments, they have their own budgets, they'd make their own call. So. It is, but again, you know, you know, I think he, I think he finds, heck, he's here half the time and on the road half the time. All right. Did we beat that to death?
I do have a report from WJF, however, I didn't print it. It's 700.
Where's your microphone? Hold your microphone, I can't hear you.
It's from all the testing for the PFAS and all that stuff, for all those houses. So I do have the report. I can print it if you want it printed, or I can email it to each of you.
How many pages is it?
712.
I'd like a, I'd like a PDF, thank you.
Okay. He's going to give me the hard copies for the residents, because they each have them, they get their results.
Wow.
He prints them, gives them to me, and then I, I nail them out to them.
Are all pages full?
Uh, every page is full, yeah. It's crazy.
Oh, your government-
That's your thousand, whatever, how much ever it is, a test. It's there full now. And they put a drip line in today for the town hall to get tested. Our water operator did, so.
Okay.
See how that goes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to put that on for next week. Everyone's going to come back with their thoughts and suggestions. We have, next we have a permit. The seniors want wine and beer. Is this on a daily basis, or?
All right, then. Let me start out the go.
I'll get the membership up. So I have three requests for one-day permits for the senior center. One is a volunteer appreciation day, they will appreciate that. That is a one-day permit for April 20th from 5:00 to 9:00. We have, we can vote the separate.
Waiving the fee, right?
Yes, always, yeah.
What did you do?
So moved.
Second.
In favor? Aye, thank you. Volunteers can drink. All right, estate planning seminar on May 17th from 6:00 to 8:00.
Are they going to have beer and wine at that?
Apparently so.
Are they going to plan their finances?
Well, they're selling.
Sounds even better.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And then-
This is a one-day permit for the Alzheimer's Association fundraiser dinner on August 5th, 2023. From 5:00 to 10:00 PM.
A long dinner.
They probably don't remember.
Hoping not.
Uh, so moved.
Second. All right, then. Selectmen, well, we have, go ahead. Bob, do your report.
They can't, they can't hear you, Bob.
Your mic is off.
And if, this is Whip City Fiber and the Fiber Optic Project that I'm talking about. They said if we're able to work out funding in time for the fall, that we jump ahead in line and that they could, they could begin the work immediately. Now, they did say it's very good timing, if we could get that squared away by the fall. And one of the towns that have signed up would come after us, put it that way. I'm not going to mention the name.
Is that what, is that what that guy's doing out there today?
With the sticks.
With the stick?
Yep.
Was he doing measuring the pole or saying?
The line heights, probably.
The line heights?
Yeah.
Then they are coming to our annual town meeting with information, so we can-
Yes, I've asked them, yeah, they're, they're going to, speak to it.
They're going to do the presentation.
Yes. As you know, the shared conservation agent arrangement, arrangement fell through.
Right.
Should be arranged. It fell through today. Blandford Selectmen said they didn't think that the town could afford to cover even 10 hours of a conservation agent. And I said, Ambede is not interested in hiring a full-time person, we don't have that much need. So we're back to square one. And then I got a contact this afternoon, Whip City, not Whip, PVPC is trying to generate a shared arrangement. And just this afternoon, got a message from the person who's working on this for us, under a DLTA grant, that he's got another town that may be interested. So we're going to keep going through this. I think we'll probably eliminate all the towns in Pioneer Valley before long. But we want a shared arrangement so that this, this issue that we have at our Conservation Commission can be resolved. And also, I've suggested to each of the potential partners that we would like to be able to hire someone who would be responsible as our stormwater manager as well as work as a conservation agent. I think they fit together very well. I know that other towns are looking in that direction. We've joined the broadband coalition, and that's a coalition of the towns that you see, and it's growing. So it's, it's basically a Zoom call, period. So it's, it's basically a Zoom call periodically to see what, what towns are doing what as far as the fiber program. So, uh, Wilbraham just got in as well. A government study committee was not able to interview the Fog people at their meeting last time, but they've been rescheduled for April the twenty-seventh. That's, there are two retired town administrators who are part of the Mass Municipal Association Form of Government Committee, F O N, uh, who are just going to take questions and respond to any thoughts and concerns uh, or recommendations that the government study committee may have. And lastly, we've already talked about the shared health program and some of the issues that we have with the shortfall. That's a hard number there on the bottom.
Okay.
Twenty-one, four, five, five.
Okay. Thank you. Quickly, before we start the advisory hearing, we did get copies of the current ledger. We show them, this is from the, the town accountant. Couple of items I noticed here, I did speak to Mark Langone about the snow and ice over, which is only in the forty thousand range, which isn't bad. I think we're hoping right now we see the end of the season. The only thing he's checking right now is he's looking to see what the projection is for salt numbers. Uh, if they're projecting a pretty good jump in the fall, he's saying he may fill the shed right now while the price is still low. So you may see that number, but certainly not in the couple hundred thousand range we've seen in years past.
Yeah, that ledger is right up to date, it's one that Cliff sent today.
Okay, I do, I see on the third page, I'm going to ask Craig about this. What's up with the radio thing?
I don't know, that's what I wanted to know too.
Okay, good. Okay, yeah, like we're, well, fourteen thousand over on radio.
There he is.
I thought we had extra money in the.
That's fourteen thousand over on radio.
Is this for the tower rentals though?
We're, we're getting overdraft and police radio fire, we're trying to figure out why. Okay. Yeah, right. Building inspector inspection expense is over by three hundred bucks, but I'm sure I'll find out. That's certificates or something minor, right? And I really don't see any other account except for, of course, we're aware of the transfer station problem.
You know what, some of that belongs.
Only one of mine is, okay.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't remember what the number is.
Information Technology.
Yeah.
Fifty-two point zero.
I think we're okay.
That'll be compensation tomorrow.
I think it's just a question of continuously using the old number. Right, I think we're okay.
Yeah, okay.
I'll double-check tonight.
Please, okay.
Get an email to you.
Thank you. Other than that, I do see, I know you're watching some accounts, obviously worried about transfer station expenditures, expenses. That's the worst one, it looks like, at this point.
You know, not a big deal, but the filling of inspectors' gas.
More and more building things, but of course, those fees he gets back aren't, aren't directly offsetting, that's the problem. You can't use them, right?
Right.
Yeah. And snow and ice number's not bad.
I think we're, we touched a bullet there.
Right.
And you know what, we're going to need it.
Good, good. All right. All right. So what I would think, unless we have some reports, I would think we would pretty much end our meeting, but leave our Zoom part open for the advisory to use it. Is that good?
Yeah.
All right. So I'll take a motion to, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Who did it? All right, all in favor? Aye, thank you. So don't close the meeting. Unless you want to close, start up. But we didn't put out a separate code.
Huh? You're going to be in the meeting. So close your meeting. Adjourn your meeting.
But we're not in, it's not our meeting.
I see.
We're done with ours, they're starting theirs. I know, I know you posted they were having a meeting, but you didn't put up a separate Zoom code for advisories.
We can just split the video later.
Yeah, we're fine, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We're fine, I printed twenty copies of the warrant. And I also included copies of the motions. No, you're, you're good. I'm good. There's a copy of the warrant, and those are motions. Yeah. All right.
Well, this is you, Tom.
As far as I know, it isn't. It's at six-thirty. Is it the same one that you had earlier?
This is, this is for you, this is for, um, Carrie. So when, when would I get that, Bob? Perfect. All right, I got to go print that Friday morning. Love it. No, I can't do anything, I can't do anything with it tonight. Tomorrow is perfect.
Uh, mic's on, please, everybody. Seven o'clock? Seven oh-four. Ready, Bob? Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, uh, the public hearing for the advisory committee. This is the meeting at which we review the articles that are on for town meeting on May eighth. Uh, this is the opportunity for the advisory committee to receive input from the citizens in town. It's also an opportunity for citizens to ask questions regarding any of the articles and receive answers and hopefully clarifications. Uh, what we will be doing is going through the warrant as drafted, unless anybody needs any. Do we have extra copies? Hold, hold on, let me see, does anybody need a copy of the warrant?
We did twenty.
Bob?
Yes. Yes. I, I'm set up the screen share.
I think we're all set, Pam. So what, in terms of procedure, what we're going to do is go through the articles one at a time, review them, take discussion, have discussion, move on to the next. I would ask that people confine the, the questions and comments to each article and that we not jump back and forth. So once we complete an article and move on, please don't revert back. So, taking article one is the town report. It's the one which is included each year. Article two, the annual operating budget. Advisory has been meeting with department heads since February. We've met with, I think, everybody. And our received budget requests, we've discussed them with the department heads. Advisory itself has not yet had our own internal discussions or voted any of these numbers yet. Uh, I'm just looking for the most recent, thank you. We have not voted our recommendations yet on any of these requests, but what we will do tonight is present the requests. And when the green sheets are printed and distributed about a week before town meeting, they will have recommendations for most of the articles. There will be some which will be recommended from the floor, and the green sheets will indicate which are which. So in terms of the budget, one point zero is the accountant. The requested amount is seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Um, and if anybody has any questions, please just speak up, because I'll be reading this. If you raise your hand or something, I won't see it. Two point zero is the advisory committee. The expenses, five thousand, nine hundred, ninety-one dollars. Three point zero, Board of Appeals. Requested amount, eight thousand, nine hundred, twenty-six dollars. Four point zero, the Board of Assessors, requested amount, one hundred, forty-eight thousand, one hundred, seventy-six dollars. Five point zero, building department expenses. Uh, requested total building, one hundred, thirty-five thousand, six hundred, eleven dollars. Six point zero, county retirement. I, I say requested, the demanded amount is seven hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Seven point zero, insurance. The total insurance, seven hundred, fifty-one thousand, seventeen dollars. Eight point zero, law and claims, requested amount, ninety-five thousand dollars. Moderator, nine point zero, one hundred dollars. We're holding the line on that. Ten point zero, planning board, thirty-nine thousand, sixty-five dollars. Board of registrars, eleven point zero, requested amount, thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, selectmen, twelve point zero, total requested, one hundred, fifty-eight thousand, one hundred, five dollars. Tax collector, thirteen point zero, total requested amount, eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred, eighty-seven dollars. Fourteen point zero, town clerk, total requested amount, ninety-five thousand, nine hundred, seventy-three dollars. Fifteen point zero, town report, three thousand, six hundred dollars. Sixteen point zero, treasurer, total requested, eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred, sixty-one dollars. Veterans benefits, seventeen point zero, twenty thousand dollars. Town administrator, nineteen point zero, total requested, one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, moving on to general town services, twenty point zero, academy hall maintenance, total requested, four thousand, five hundred dollars. Cemetery commission, twenty-one point zero, total requested, forty thousand, one hundred, twenty-two dollars. Twenty-two point zero, conservation commission, total requested, forty thousand, five hundred, ninety-nine dollars. Twenty-three point zero, transfer station, total requested, one hundred thousand dollars. Before anybody asks a question, I, you'll note that that's going up from the appropriated amount for the current year of twenty-five thousand to the requested amount of one hundred thousand dollars. That has to do with additional testing, which is required as a result of water contamination, and it's being put under the transfer station, under the monitoring testing. Twenty-four point zero, school building repairs, fifteen thousand dollars. Twenty-six point zero, library, total requested, one hundred, ninety-six thousand, six hundred, sixty-nine dollars. Twenty-seven point zero, town events, total requested amount, four thousand, five hundred dollars. Twenty-nine point zero, office equipment, total requested, ninety thousand dollars. Twenty, thirty point zero, parks and rec, total requested, one hundred, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Before I move on, does Parks, Rita?
On the salary accounts, is there a formula that was suggested?
The, the thinking on salaries was four percent. Some people will, will receive a step, every other year people receive a step. So depending on where people are on, in that sequence, they'll receive more than four percent or four percent. The, so that's been built in. There's some changes also in terms of hours requested and a few grade changes as well. So I mean, there's a combination of the COLAs, um, some changes in hours and some changes in grade. Okay? Yes, Rob? Uh, no, the, the Parks and Rec request includes a request for a Parks and Rec director. I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
It's on Providence, uh, administrative assistant and maintenance. Probably trying to go. Yeah. The, the director is a new position that they're proposing for July first.
Well, does, does Parks and Rec want to say something on, on their request?
Um, I'm trying to bring it back, especially because we had, we have a surprise. As for, yeah, we need next month, and we are trying to bring in more programs, but we are confident. But we are confident that we can do it. And being that, uh, we all have some, uh, we would like to, work in town. U T W B more. Get the building here. And, um,
So, we've got this great opportunity here. We've got a great town, right? We've got a lot of resources out here. And the underutilization of the resources, we think bringing a Director back in is going to give us that opportunity to really start ramping up some other programs. Be able to look outside the just aimed in and, and the knowledge that we have. We have a different kind of job. We all have other things on our elected board. But we don't have as much time now to go after all these other things too. You know, historically for the past few years, it's often about kids and, and resources. Well, you know, not getting younger and the town is not getting younger, but there are some people coming in. How do we offer more opportunities? How do we refine those other opportunities? And one of the things that a Director can do is really come out and start soliciting other things. We have a gymnasium up over there in T W B. We added a pick-up ball not too long ago. Great opportunity, right? What else can we do and how many other things can we do and how do we get people involved in this? And a Director would be that, this, and all that. And I think so, that is a huge opportunity for us.
Austin? I'll be right behind you. A lot, yes. Um, any, are there any, any questions for Parks and Rec before we move on? Okay, thank you. Thirty-two point zero, Townhouse Maintenance. Um, total requested amount, eighty-seven thousand dollars. Thirty-four point zero, Ambulance, total requested, three sixty-three eight seventy-eight. Um, that's, that's contract, Bob, correct? That's the contracted amount?
Yes.
For ambulance? Uh, thirty-five point zero, Gasoline, total requested, sixty thousand dollars. Thirty-six point zero, Street Lighting. Uh, thirty thousand dollars. Thirty-seven point zero, Council on Aging, total requested amount, one hundred ninety-nine thousand ninety-nine dollars. Didn't realize that until I said it out loud. We could have rounded, we could have rounded that, but... The, uh... Senior Center, thirty-eight point zero, total requested, forty thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars. Historical Commission, thirty-nine point zero, total requested, four hundred dollars. That makes the total request for General Town Services, one million four hundred and four thousand two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Now, moving on to the Highway Department, uh, we have forty point zero, Superintendent Salary. So, this, this is a contract amount as well?
That's a contract.
Contract. Uh, Request, hundred and one thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars. Uh, forty point one, Departmental Payroll, Request, two hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars. Forty-one point zero, Tree Warden, sixty thousand two hundred seventy dollars. Forty-two point zero, Public Grounds, total request, four thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Highway Maintenance, total request, three hundred fifteen thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars. General Highway Expense, item forty-four point zero, total request, eighteen thousand three hundred dollars. Forty-five point zero, Snow and Ice Removal, total request, one hundred thousand dollars. Forty-six point zero, Contract Services, total request, sixty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Forty-seven point zero, Other Highway Accounts, total request, twenty-one thousand dollars. Forty-eight point zero, Building Expenses, total request, sixteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Total Highway, uh, Request, nine hundred ninety thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars. Uh, moving on to Protection of Persons and Property, fifty point zero, Animal Inspection. Five thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars requested. Emergency Management, fifty-one point zero, total request, four thousand nine hundred dollars. Fifty-one point five, Traffic Control, total request, fifteen thousand dollars. Fifty-two point zero, Dog Officer, total request, fourteen thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars. Fifty-three point zero, Fire Department. Total Request, four hundred three thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars. Fifty-four point zero, Forest Fire Control, total request, one thousand eight hundred dollars. Fifty-six point zero, Board of Health, total requests, one hundred one thousand two hundred thirteen dollars. Fifty-six point five, Water District, total request, fourteen thousand dollars. Police, fifty-seven point zero, total request, one million four hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars. Fifty-eight point zero, Other Police Accounts, total request, one thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars. Total Police Request is one million four hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. Fifty-nine point zero, Police and Fire Communications, total request, twenty-seven thousand two hundred forty-five dollars. Total Requested for Protection of Persons and Property, two million eighty-five thousand three hundred and eight dollars. Uh, moving on to the Schools, sixty-nine point zero. Regional School District, total requests, eight eight million two hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Government Debt, seventy point zero. Uh, Total Request, six hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Making the total requested budget, uh, one million five hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Fifteen million?
Excuse me, fifteen million? Can't, can't, can't we have? Fifteen million nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Making a total requested increase of eight hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Or five point four percent increase, uh, spending side of the budget. Before we move off the budget, does anybody have any questions on Article Two? Okay. Uh, Rita, yes? Oh, we're expecting fewer emergencies, Rita. I don't know, Bob. Do you know why that went down? Hold on, wait, hold on. We have an answer in the background.
I know.
We had a one-time charge when we went to new software.
For the current year?
There was also previously, we get last police chief, partial emergency management wanted his salary. And that's only new contract, new chief. That's no longer issues with the two-step.
Any, any, any further questions on the, on the budget, Article Two? Yes? On, on the bonds, yes, reach of those buildings. You sound disappointed. This is, this has been very deliberate and very intentional. And it's been kept as limited as possible. Any, any further? Okay, any, anything else on, on the budget aspect before we move on? Very good. Moving on, Article Three.
No prior year bills.
Okay, no, no prior year bills, so I anticipate there'll be no action on Article Three. Uh, Article Four, uh, the fiscal two thousand twenty-four spending limits for the revolving funds. There was a question raised, um, Bob, and I don't know, hey, John? John, there was a question raised on the revolving funds on the Board of Health, whether we have to keep that in? Or whether that should be eliminated and put into the general, general revenue?
If we keep it in, we have to identify different funding streams. So, covering that now, we still are...
So, you're aware that there's limits, limits on that. Any questions on Article Four? Article Five, the Enterprise Fund for the Transfer Station. Are we still looking for no new revenue on that?
Correct.
Anticipate no action on Article Five. Article Six. That essentially self-funds.
Yeah. Put in ten thousand last year from the General Fund, but no General Fund money this year.
Article Six, Community Preservation. There are two requests for Community Preservation Funds, uh, this year. There's one in the amount of sixty-three thousand three hundred dollars, uh, which has been requested by the Minnetog Land Trust for the purchase of thirteen point, I think it's thirteen point one acres uh, off of the end of Walnut Street, off of Hickory. It abus the existing Minnetog, uh, property and it also fronts on the river. So, that's a request for sixty-three thousand three hundred dollars. Uh, before I move on to the second request, any questions on the Land Trust? The second request is from the School, uh, Department, looking for forty-five thousand dollars for, um, Adaptive Playground Equipment, um, for Green Meadows. My understanding is that the School District has made a similar request to the Town of Wilbraham CPA for adaptive equipment for, I believe it's for Mile Tree. Not that it has any influence or impact on our decision relative to our CPA, but just to indicate that the district is balancing the requests. Um, any questions on either of those requests? Okay, moving on. Article Number Seven, the Conservation Fund. We're anticipating putting one thousand dollars in the Conservation Fund. Continuing a time-honored tradition. Yeah. Article Eight, Chapter Ninety, State Highway Aid.
The number is in the, in the motions. It's the number from the Governor's Budget, it's likely to...
So, the number of two hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-nine? And, and if, if anything, that number will go up likely?
Well, there's another hundred and fifty in the Gov-, hundred and fifty million in the Governor's Budget. I have no information on how that they intend to distribute that. It could be the RAP program that we got this year to fill potholes. But, uh, we don't have, we don't have the information at this point.
So, more, more to come, hopefully before town meeting. Um, Article Nine, Library Additional State Aid. We usually vote to accept whatever the state is willing to give to the library. Article Ten, Reimbursement for the Minnetog Land Trust. Uh, this is a request for thirty-two hundred dollars. Uh, the Land Trust, um, had some work done on the trailhead off of South Road. For, for people who are familiar with it, uh, there's, there's the drive-in and their small parking area. The Land Trust, uh, had a bunch of trees taken out and a bunch of, uh, stumps, um, ground. Part of that was paid in the current year, uh, from a previous appropriation. Uh, this thirty-two hundred, I believe, is for the stump grinding, if I recall correctly, yes? Uh, so they're looking for this thirty-two hundred, uh, from the town. We could not pay this from the, the Community Preservation Money. Uh, because this falls under maintenance. We can't, we can't pay for maintenance. We can pay for capital improvements. So, if, if the Land Trust had made a bigger expenditure, we probably could have squeezed it into Community Preservation, but it didn't. So, this is what we have. Article Eleven, Fire Truck Renov-, Fire Truck Renovation. Um, do we have a number on this? Excuse me? Not to exceed? Not to exceed ten thousand? Can you just, can you just give us a, a quick summary of what those renovations are?
Sure. It's a two thousand two, um, international rescue camper using that engine that we respond to rescues. The truck was spec'd out and came with a generator, seventy-five hundred watt, and right at the back of it. Which is fed off the heat of the truck. And that powers our hydraulic system, the rescue tools, and others, spreaders, and car access. Now, we have electric, uh, with spreaders and cars. We might remove that generator, hydraulic, and he comes back and he, uh, after that is, uh, my job. And store new equipment in there, making it more pretty, so that obviously a better access.
So, are the hydraulics going away completely? Right, any, any questions on that? Thank, thank you, Ed. Article Fourteen, uh, New Dump Truck for the Highway Department. Oh, excuse me. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm jumping here. Article Twelve, Funding to Maintain the Town's Defibrillators.
Fifty-eight twenty.
Fifty-eight twenty. Five thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. This is, this is just to keep our current defibrillators...
Yeah, we have twelve.
You have twelve, twelve in town, really?
At least have five, fire has five, one, Town Hall has one, and Senior Center has one.
Oh, that's good. Okay, uh, Article Thirteen, Local Match for Grants for Fire Department Forestry Truck. Showing a number here of...
Ten nine fifty-two.
Hold on one second. What was that, Mark? The fibrillator is five thousand eight hundred and twenty. So, Article Thirteen.
It's ten thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. And it replaces a nineteen fifty-three model.
Isn't that, aren't we getting a bit...
And we're getting, uh, about two hundred and nineteen thousand in the grant.
Two hundred and nineteen thousand dollar grant and we only have to put in ten thousand nine hundred...
Right, that's the local match.
Wow. Shouldn't be too much discussion on that one. Article Fourteen is the new dump truck for the Highway Department.
That's two twenty-two, four sixty-five.
Okay, and it...
But the question then is, uh, had a discussion with the Treasurer, are we going to transfer money, borrow money, or unlikely raise it appropriately?
We, we, we had some discussion about that earlier this evening and he seemed to, to think that he didn't need the borrowing authority, that there's sufficient cash flow to, to cover this. Uh, we can, we can have the discussion whether or not the motion should include that borrowing option, just if he wants to have the flexibility.
Yeah, if, you know, if, if there's no reason for us to do any charge and borrowing, cash flows fine. If we decide that we need to spread the money over a couple of years, we can do that with the last two articles. And then in stabilization. We need to pay off fifty thousand a year, a hundred thousand a year. We've got to have everybody in stabilization, but it's not right.
Okay. Let's see, Article Fifteen, Additional Funding for the Master Plan. Are we still no action on that one?
Well, in the discussion I had just recently with Joanne, uh, the difference between seventy-five thousand dollar grant, which is going to go away... seventy-five thousand dollar grant, which is going to go away, but I put in a request to renew it. So if the town gets a seventy-five thousand dollar grant, the vendor that they, they like best wants a hundred and thirty-two thousand, so that would mean the town would have to come up with fifty-seven five.
So the anticipation would be that this fifty-seven five would only be spent if we re-qualify for the grant?
For the grant.
John?
The conversation we had asked about this and natural risk forward, where I personally don't think it's a good idea. We don't have this grant yet. If we got this grant, and you want to go for this, it's more appropriate, I think, to straight cash. Rather than putting it on the tax rate, because you don't tell the grant is done yet. It's like that type of thing you mentioned, Carol, last week, we're playing on the budget. If we didn't even know up to sixty thousand last week, we could not spring this on you here. I just don't think, when you don't actually have that other grant in your hands. If we do get that grant, ask about it, we don't hear anything from them. So this is something you could address in the call.
Yes.
Probably midsummer.
Available by midsummer?
Yep. So I think the strategy of waiting till the fall, using free cash or some other source seems to make sense because we will not know for sure that the renewal of the grant is being approved. And if, if it, if it is approved, you know, we'd have to come up with fifty-seven five. Oh, yeah, I mean, the town, town can cover that expense in the fall. It might mean that the planning board would have to stretch out the renewal of the updating of the master plan for another year. We were looking, we discussed at least annual town meeting in two thousand twenty-four. Given that we're losing time here, it might mean that they'd report back in two thousand twenty-five.
So, Nick?
Take this off?
If you're the president, you need, they order town meetings, if you're governing, no action. But not, if we talked before, it was going to be out to you, she has to explain where we are. If that town meeting, if we didn't have proper funding, you're still, the voters should be, your voters are going to get us a talk. This is still the ultimate plan, you need individual funding, or back to two thousand.
How like, we do need this.
Right. So I don't think we're going to move on at that this point. It's not a good, lucky, well, you get it, yeah.
The difference is, if you voted the town meeting, it would be available until July first. In the fall, we're talking about October first, it's not a huge timeline difference. Nobody gets any help this summer anyway.
Yeah, I haven't been getting something started.
All right, so maybe leave it on for informational purposes, then no action? Okay. All right. So we went from no action to fifty-seven thousand, back to no action, just like that. Article sixteen, citizens petition.
I came in today, I just put it on there, Article sixteen.
Okay, this is a citizen's petition that, let's see, this article would begin to involve the Hampton Fire Department with ambulance services. The fire department purchases, purchased a nineteen ninety-six Ford Econoline ambulance from the town of Hadley in two thousand twenty-one, which would be used for transports. Do you, Jim, do you want to give a little background on this?
I mean, I personally, I thought part of the petition, I just pulled that out, I've been on the ambulance. Six months, but I'm not, I'm just, I'm just, just that I can't see this through the ambulance service. Experience. In the goal to constantly improve our ambulance service, we have an ambulance that was going into for this fire department, because it was in two thousand twenty. For the segment later, the customers want you to give two words to the fire department to buy out that ambulance certified. There's currently three people on the, on fire department, for the time, ready to fight. Even teams that can, you know, we have a special, we have a senior experience. We have a contract with a third party right now, providing ambulance service. So anything that the town does, we have to be, or even that contractor is not available for riding reasons, they're making it into your cloud, they have a mutual account, and you're not available to do. So this is a supplement, and when it comes up, surprisingly, more often than not, what we think. Just last week, there was a day, a woman, that was at business on Main Street. He had a responder, he was there two minutes, and that woman had to wait for ten minutes. We're already endorsed to come from another town because our contract service will only transport. There was an accident by a show station back in February, by an ambulance, fire. So they had to move into a new town, as again, was during the day, when we got the people on, on staff. With this motion, it is, is to create a fund, so that if we first have, gives the authority, you know, to improve the fire department, by an ambulance, transport, any money they collect that transport is put into this separate account. Then can be appropriated in subsequent years.
Is this, this cites chapter forty, section five F, is that specific to ambulances or is that revolving?
It's specific to services, services or communities, we understand. It's very much like an enterprise fund, where he comes in, he stays there, has to get, has to get forwarded, every year. And it's called, it's called the ambulance fund. It's, it's reserved for ambulance funds, so anything that comes in from billing service, with the, with your party bill service. Anything that comes in from building that out, it'll be available in subsequent years. He goes to our seven, most parts.
Is that their party, their party company, John, or this fund?
They, they would take it out of the building, so there's a billion, a thousand dollars, because you take care of it.
But if someone doesn't pay the bill, which then everybody knows, you're going to have to get collections for everyone involved in that.
Well, they, they, if, if their party, as far as I know, does that, they, they write the collections, they're always. But, you know, there's, this would be the same kind of billing service that right now does it for, almost, like, number, paying up the exact same one at the same time. Those are current contract ambulance services. And they have a track record on it, it's not a hundred percent, but it's, it's a good track record.
I would sit the fire chief, is there, any, do you know if there's different liability, you know, it's required to run the ambulance within the fire department right now? Or we're not currently covered by?
I would have to check.
Jim, does this, does this just create the fund? Does it, does it create any other, anything else in the authorities or?
Anything else at this point in time? Like, well, my first thought was, hey, you're willing to spend, incorporate your spend, but even if we did, and, and, yeah, I got, I got, and others, and others, that the first step, exploratory towns, none of them passed. They were running, on the ambulance service, they were going from time to time, to the fire department, providing ambulance service, in separate appropriation, and we start this, we're in the separate years that we have.
Well, anticipate there'll be a lot of discussion at town meeting on this one. Don?
So Mr. Jim Roberts, to us, as a citizen's petition, which requires somebody book, or signatures. He wasn't able to get it validated by the board of registers today, and it was not on. We're going to close the warrant tonight. The board had a vote to hold the warrant open, to allow the process to be finished. Don researched it, this needs to be done to be a valid submission of us. But right now, we've got a place, well, we're on there, the process is not a hundred percent complete at this point, because we don't have a sign off at board register.
All right, so.
It's his favor, should be done, I mean, you have to read it.
Don?
So I'm speaking now as a, as a board selectman, I think. I oppose the list, because the article is asking us to extend a full account to deposit money. Only that the town meeting has not authorized us to collect the services provided next to this separate book, by public service, because we can do fees and permits, but not personal services. We haven't established, it's like we have not been authorized to establish the fee schedule. We haven't been authorized to hire a billing or processing agency to do this forms, or whatever. We have no insurance contracts with insurance companies that's like money. So we'll, we have to bill the people rightly, the people who, a lot of cases, versus your insurance company will bank up, and then send him the check, and we have to try to connect the check, and then we have more classes for that. We're basing this on a twenty-seventy rolling ambulance that fire chiefs, known this one, was quite annoying last, a lot of years. And we're asking this separate account for private services, how much do you, we have three sixty-five. We're in the range of three sixty-five, and these services, our mutual aid partners, are there all the time for us. You sent it after for a three more year, I think it happened about three times a month, for the last fifteen months, it could be a case where the ambulance wasn't available, part of the term, I'm not sure that it is. So it's putting the cart, the current, the current cart in front of horse, while in this particular instance, we don't need to hold the cart yet, or a horse, both looking for the other, so. That might, that would pass negative action.
It just created a larger discussion.
It, it, it does appear that will be the case, yes, Jim?
And I'm certainly, some of the things you've thought of, recently said, but the the mutual aid, one of the things that just, we're, with the mutual aid, it's tied together, because you can be, the woman had to have to, once it's gone out. And, 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 this network, I think, I've, I've, person that knew a business yesterday the other day, and was, named, paying for transport, that way, efficient payments. So, there is, these things happen, they say, a few times a month, for, when, when actually it's unavailable. I've put it on the town meetings that they have gone, for, for town, community runs, we've gone from a they started to do this in service, and I never saw anything that pays, we, or to a, or, if you have any expectations about that. I'm not clear with that, you have any information on that? However, we're in this, got twenty thousand, uh, uh, dollars.
All right, I, I don't want to devolve into a angel's on the head of the pin here, but Rob, Robin, last comment.
Yeah, I guess that was the comment. I want the, also the ambulance. And as far as, I'm not in favor of this, because I think we pay for something. And asking the town, people to contribute more money for something that we don't need. Mutual aid is our contract, is something contract. We also provide mutual aid to the other towns on our ambulance service quite frequently. And there's a new ambulance service, we're operating right over the mountain, at, at Johnson Memorial Hospital, have two full-time ALS ambulances and two non-transport paramedic service starting July first. And it's my understanding, where I was told by, that the, 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 that they will be also available to service, we have a, and we have a, the ALS, the, the, so that's just over the mountain, and that'll be another service that will be, you know, service, so for us to put in enough, any other additional money, I have another concern with, would be covering the fire department. And if there were two responders, maybe it would be one person back at the firehouse, had a permit, there's a fire. So I think there's additional expenses that we have to pay. Volunteer firemen to meet my call from eight to five, I just, I think we have a twenty-four seven ambulance service that is like an outstanding job. For ambulance to eventually evolve and to take the overall ambulance service is going to cost millions of dollars, because we are shrinking in numbers. I think it's, you know, pay four million for an ambulance, we do three hundred and sixty-five thousand, with the rebate, so.
Okay. Don, I'm going to ask you to hold your, hold your comments till town meeting, because we do have to move through the rest of this. I think, I think the input that we have received in terms of our, our function here this evening, which is receive citizens input, indicates that this is an article which is going to generate a lot of interest. Assuming that it, that it clears the procedural hurdle and makes the warrant. At town meeting, this will generate some discussion, and I, we, we as advisor have not discussed this yet, but I'm predicting that this is one that will make a recommendation from the floor of town meeting, because, you know, we're hearing much of this tonight for the first time ourselves. So unless anybody strenuously objects, I'm going to move on to the next article. No strenuous objections, okay. Article seventeen, the Hampton Wilbraham Regional School District capital budget. This is an item that the amount associated with this is eighty-five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. This capital, this is, this is Hampton's portion of a capital request that was included with the, the school assessment letter which we received. This eighty-five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars is also included in article two in the operating budget. Because we have received somewhat conflicting advice as to whether or not the, the capital request can be considered separate from the request for operating, the operating budget. So we will have further clarification on that issue, which will determine whether or not we actually move forward with this article, article seventeen separately, or whether it stays within the, the operating budget on article two. So unless anybody has any questions about that, Jim? It's, it's, there's five different items that are included. There's updating wireless access points, these are all at the high school, these are all the regional, you know, the regionally owned property. So there's updated wireless access points. Installation of railings on the second floor, on the, kind of the bridge that goes in front of the library, I still call it the library, the IRC. Classroom projection monitors, camera system update, and AC mini-split systems. So there's five items that are included within the capital request, and our portion of that assessment is eighty-five thousand, three hundred and nineteen. So the, the first issue procedurally is whether or not we can consider that standing alone, or whether we have to consider it as part of the overall school assessment. And then the second item is, you know, the, the items within, whether they can be considered separately, or whether they get voted as one, one item, or all, all, or, excuse me, all, either all up or all down. So there's a couple of procedural things that have to be worked out yet before town meeting. All right, anything, any other, other questions on that? Okay. Article eighteen, fiber optic program borrowing. Are we still no action on that?
No, what the committee wants to do is just report on progress so far, not going to ask for any funding.
Okay, so this will be informational and then no action?
That's right, that's right.
Okay, article nineteen, senior center design funding, same, same situation, that'll be informational. Don?
I'm Don Collins, and I'm a member of the, of the senior center building committee along with the, 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 the main. We'd like to do a brief update on, and report on the background and notification of future plans, they have been senior center. Historically, two thousand nineteen. Historically, two thousand and eighteen, the council on age, before, senior center, question that the selectmen have a study done on the current and future needs, maybe three-year-olds, certain building. Selectmen, the point of the senior center building committee, so ten community members, contracted, EDM, a design firm, school aid, piece of business study. That was a piece of business study now, building committee, meeting two times a month the last four and a half months, review, repeat, modify, on the primary plan. This review is still on. Once the study is finalized, there will be, this, question, town meeting, for future funds, final design, architecture, uh, this question for those funds. Once, when a plan is completed, the request will be made, not meeting, once, next. But ones are being requested at this time, or is nearly done, or the town's.
Okay, thank you. And will Becky have a PowerPoint?
With a chart?
With some charts? All right. Very good, thank you. Anything further on the senior center design funding request? Okay. Article twenty, um, this is a request for change in the zoning bylaw, uh, which goes on at length. I'm not going to read this, but it is included within the language in the warrant, so if anybody has any questions, I'd suggest, uh, getting that to the planning board before town meeting, because that's who we will refer the questions to. Um, any, any comments, questions? Okay. Moving on.
I, with your, the planning board, if anybody has a, a problem with the, with the, with the, creation of the basic, of the, of, 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 and Heather, is this in response to a particular issue, or is this just in anticipation?
I'm aware of, but I'm not always.
All right. All right, well.
No, I mean, I, my assumption is, there are people in the community that already have, uh, businesses, like a small apartment, and, um, you see, you brought to the planning board to try and, uh, find what the criteria would need to be to maintain the property values of zones that you have there, and the safety of the materials, et cetera.
All right, well, I've just invited people to comment, to, to contact the planning if they have any questions. Jim?
Right, well, that's written in the bylaw, so.
But it's, 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 it'll be, it'll be enforceable in that, um, it's, 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 it's,
it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, it's, but I understand what you're saying, when, when, when a house goes on the market, oh, um, the, the, it's going to be, it's going to be, yeah, it'll, the title will, will identify that this is an existing, this home at this time, um, and that will then, it'll be displaceable, if it's closed, to the new, yeah, but they have to, they, they, for the specific service, they have to, write a, write a letter to the planning board, to put there, but, but to your point, is anything enforcement is not always, that is. And I think it's written to do with best enforcement.
Anything, anything further on that?
Oh, and let me just say one other thing, though, and if anyone notices that something is going on, you know, how long they think, is, is.
Can we, um?
Hey, hey, guys, guys, hey. I'm in trouble hearing.
If, if anyone notices that they, or this, and, uh, the, we would be the building inspector, we'll be going out and, and checking on this, and then it would come to the attention of the planning board, if some of the violations, but to point you up.
Hello, I'm sorry. Was there, oh, Dwayne? Yes?
I just, I, 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 yes, there is, there is a clause in there, it's, 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 it's,
Give you a taste of what you can expect at town meeting. Anything further? Okay, thank you, Heather. Article twenty-one, easement agreement with National Grid. This is a no-money article, this is to allow National Grid to run poles up to the new solar field at the dump. Article twenty-two, funding for Hampton's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary events. John, you want to speak to that?
Right, because I was going to be, uh.
Yeah.
Basically, just start putting some money aside, on an annual basis, when we get up to one fifty, some people will remember, like, as the celebration of the hundred, by our, for, 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 for,
All right, any questions on that? Okay, and if anybody's interested in volunteering for the committee, John's taking names. Article twenty-three, assessors funding for state mandated programs. Still no action on that? Article twenty-four, school resource officer, this is for the, the police officer who is at the high school, um, the, our portion of that this year is eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Article twenty-five is the advisory reserve fund. We anticipate requesting twenty-five thousand dollars in that, which is the amount we have historically put in there. Article twenty-six, general stabilization fund, we anticipate no action on that. Article twenty-seven, reducing tax rate, we anticipate no action on that either. That concludes the warrant. Unless anybody has anything to say relative to the warrant itself, this will conclude the hearing. Very good, thank you, everybody, appreciate your attendance. Uh, I didn't see you.
Sorry. So I'm getting that, what, five point?
Four.
Four percent, and having a tax increase?
No. Five point four percent is the increase on the spending side. We, we anticipate that there'll be new growth, as there historically is. Well, no, new growth, it goes up every year, um, and it comes from additions and new construction. And, you know, we anticipate a number of somewhere in the two hundred to two twenty-five, maybe two hundred and fifty thousand in new revenue coming from new growth. If you add in the two and a half percent increase, that's, that'd be around, uh, three hundred thousand or so. So we can fund a portion of this increase out of, out of anticipated new growth and the, you know, the, the two and a half percent natural increase, if you will, in the revenue. Beyond that, we're looking at taking money from, well, first off, there's, there's nothing that says that this is the number that town meeting is going to vote, okay? So first off, town meeting may vote a smaller number than this. Secondly, the, in the special town meeting in the fall is when we would make the determinations on the tax rate, and that's when we would determine how much free cash the town has, make recommendations on applications, uh, to reducing the tax rate, and applications to stabilization. So we wouldn't actually know what the potential impact on the tax rate would be until the special town meeting in the fall.
Oh, I remember when Mary Ellen, you know, and he, and she, um, she, 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 she put a percent, that, I know, the, the, the tax rate.
Well, and, 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 keep in mind, the five point four percent is in the operating budget, that does not include all the warrant articles that we discussed. You know, which is a, a lot of additional spending there as well.
So at the fall town meeting, is that we can transfer some money to, 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 to?
Free, with, free cash is where we typically, um, take the money, and you know what free cash is, free cash is, you know, excess revenues raised beyond, you know, planned, or, or lower expenditures than, than planned. That free cash is generally applied to a lot of the, the one-time articles, the one-time expenses, um, to keep it off the tax rate. If there's anything left in free cash after those type of purchases, we, we generally make a recommendation to apply it to reducing the tax rate, to keep the increase to manageable figure. And we, we have not had those discussions yet, what that target figure will be, frankly, in my opinion, there's too much uncertainty, still too much volatility, to, to make that type of a projection.
Getting, everybody getting reassessed here.
Well, I, I don't know, I don't, we don't have any assessors here tonight, so I.
We got a little postcard that, for the, for the three year, we just had an adjustment for everybody's, this, last year, the last two years, so, I know Mary Ellen had asked, you know, for the town departments to do five percent, we don't need the budget, it's that, and the, and the, and the, and the, so, 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 so.
Well, we, we ask for level service, um, and in some instances, there are requests that go beyond level services for various reasons, and I dare say that a five percent reduction in any budget is simply unrealistic. Doesn't, that bears no relationship to the reality on the ground. Anything further? Very good, thank you very much, everybody.